Hello, New Mexico, and welcome to another episode of Around the Roundhouse, a podcast featuring the policies, politics, and fascinating personalities of the land of enchantment from the Roundhouse and beyond. My name is Daniel Chacon, and I'm the state government reporter for the Santa Fe New Mexican. Our guest this week is Sam Ledoux, a Republican serving his first term on the Espanola City Council. Although Counselor Ledoux is just a little over a year into his first stint in public office, he is no stranger to politics and is considered by some a rising star in the Republican Party of New Mexico. He has worked on the campaigns of former Governor Susana Martinez and the late Arizona Senator John McCain, as well as in the administrations of Arizona Governor Doug Ducey and Maryland Governor Larry Hogan. Counselor, thank you so much for being our guest today. How are you?
I'm doing good, Daniel. How are you?
Pretty good, pretty good. I wanted to jump into things right away. Espanola has generated a lot of headlines or generated a lot of headlines earlier this month after a city employee accused Mayor John Ramon V. Hill of sexual assault. What's the latest on the situation?
Well, the latest on the situation is that the mayor has been in complete silence. He hasn't really answered any of our questions. As you know, we had some special meetings, and one of them we asked him to attend so that we could try to get to the bottom of the situation. He didn't attend that one. We had a follow-up meeting after discussions and executive session and tried to get him to come again, and he chose not to attend that one. And then we had the regular meeting, and seven of eight cities counselors have either asked him to resign or step down, and he hasn't attended a meeting ever since. So we've had at least seven meetings with a quorum that the mayor has not attended. And it has led to some very big issues because we had to also reject his interim city manager that he appointed, and he has yet to appoint another interim city manager. And basically, there is no leadership at the city right now. Employees are very confused. Morale is at an all-time low. The city has basically had difficulty functioning because no one really knows who's calling the shots or what's being done. We have a meeting on the budget tonight. We approved the final budget for the city for FY26, and we're not sure if the mayor is going to show up or not. There are some rumors that he may, but as far as we know, he hasn't had any interaction really with anybody at City Hall except for the clerk, who is still trying to act as city manager despite being rejected from that position.
That was going to be one of my questions, is how has this affected government operations, employee morale? And you answered it, but I mean, who's running the show? Who's running the ship?
The answer is there's really no one running the show right now because nobody has a firm grip of what to do in this situation. We have rejected his appointment for interim city manager. He's refused to appoint another one. The current interim, I mean, the current city clerk is still saying that she's still acting city manager despite being rejected by the council. And it's just a run amok. I mean, city employees are confused. They don't know whether to listen to the council or whether to listen to the clerk, and a lot of things are just going by the wayside. And the city clerk has acted in her own authority on some things. Like, for instance, we had over $870-some grant from Teresa Ledger Fernandez's office, and she just took it on her own authority to write a letter to Ledger Fernandez's office and saying that she rejected the money because she didn't know how they would be able to spend it. But she did that without council approval. Council had to reprimand her for it and ask her to rescind the letter that she sent out. But it's little things like that that are getting done that are confusing because people don't know who's in charge. And that's where the mayor's refusal to either resign or to step up and try to lead us through this crisis has come.
Counselor, it just sounds like a real mess. May I ask our government services, you know, whether it be, you know, folks being able to turn on the faucet or, you know, streets being cleaned? Are those types of services being affected?
They are being impacted in a certain way. For instance, we just had a huge water pressure issue that happened. A couple of wells went down on Industrial Park Road, and right now, the middle school and several businesses in the county up there don't have any water. And school's about to start August 7th, and I get questions every day. We had an emergency meeting. The mayor didn't attend, and we approved the money for this fix to happen, but the fix doesn't seem to be happening in a timely basis. And meanwhile, you know, businesses are suffering. You know, the county government's being impacted. The schools are being impacted. They have a middle school up there. And there's a lot of question about if there was a city manager, maybe there could be some urgency on this issue. But it seems like a lot of that is going to the wayside because of the political aspects of this entire thing.
You may have answered my question already, but I was going to ask you, the allegations against the mayor are just that allegations? Why do you think he should resign?
Well, this is a repeated pattern of behavior. This is the third allegation made at the city about how his behavior has impacted employees. Plus, he was a trustee on the HEMIS co-op board, and there's been allegations made against him there. And there's been times where I've tried to rectify the situation. When the last allegation before this one came up, I asked for some measures to be put in place, such as a check-in system when elected officials go to City Hall. And that way, you know, there's timestamps of when activities are being happened and when elected officials are there. All of these suggestions were laughed off at the second allegation, and it's just been constant chaos. I personally think he should resign for way more reasons than just the allegations, but it's because the function of government under his administration is not working, and he has no plans to fix it. He's ignored any suggestions, and, you know, the allegations just keep piling up. And at a certain point, you have to ask, when is it time for him to go? The previous allegations were only sexual harassment. This is sexual assault. When, what happens if there's an allegation of something worse? It just seems to be escalating rather than de-escalating.
Counselor, how would you describe your relationship with the mayor prior to you winning election? Or I don't know if you knew him, but how would you describe it now?
Well, I've known the mayor since he was in kindergarten. We go way back. We kind of grew up around each other. I've known him and his family, and it was pretty cordial. There's always some tension there just because of partisan differences. But, you know, it really wasn't around till he ran for mayor. The former mayor Javier Sanchez actually hired me to help make some communication materials for him, and he never forgave me for that. In fact, when I first moved back to New Mexico from living out east, I saw him at a Steve Stucker event, and I went to shake his hand, and he just would refuse to shake my hand and told me to get away from him and all this stuff. And that's honestly the type of attitude that just continues to purvey any story about him, is that he's very rude. If he doesn't like you, he'll make you know of it. And, you know, it's just contributed to a hostile work environment for city employees. And, you know, there's all sorts of rumors that I've heard over the years. I can't confirm any of them, so I won't say them here, about how he's treated employees, how he's told employees not to go certain places and stuff like that. And it's just contributed to a culture of tension. Every time you walk into City Hall, there's just a lot of tension, a lot of people on edge. And I feel like that's been one of the biggest problems that he's had.
The issues facing the city of Espanola, while they've been highlighted in the news recently, there have been, there's been a pattern in the past of city government being somewhat dysfunctional. What is it going to take to take, to turn things around in Espanola?
I think that the citizens of Espanola have to really start holding us accountable. You know, tell us when things are not working. Tell us when things are wrong, and show up and vote. I mean, in my election in 2024, there was about a 6% turnout in the voting population. And that should tell you that a lot of people, you know, a lot of people in power get away with things because people aren't paying attention. But if people pay attention, they, and hold us accountable, things will change. That's why I've always tried to be as transparent as possible and let people know as much as possible because a lot of these issues wouldn't have been highlighted. Who knows what would have gone unanswered if things were not made public?
Counselor, you mentioned the city manager earlier. Can you give us the inside scoop on what happened with former city manager Eric Lujan, who, for folks who may not know, he left his position at the end of May, but was allowed to continue working in a newly created position with the same salary and many of his benefits? What went down?
So I've always had some tensions with former city council, I mean, city manager Eric Lujan. When I first came on, he was criticizing me even as a candidate when I was talking about some of the issues with the parks and stuff. He would make commentary there at City Hall. And, you know, we had some tension and some back and forth and stuff like that. So I'm no friend of Eric Lujan, like, but at the same time, I was very disturbed with how the process went down. I can't go into too much detail about it because it was an executive session, and part of the settlement requires us to be confidential about certain things. But I can tell you that we were blindsided by the settlement. The mayor was the one who proposed this settlement. He's the one who negotiated it with the city manager. And, you know, we were basically told, we need to do it. You have to do it. There's really no way around this. We've already negotiated it. And a lot of city counselors at the time, you know, I guess they thought that was persuasive. And that's where it was a six, no, it was a five to three vote. And, you know, Counselor Benavides and Counselor Martinez and I were not convinced by the logic that was given to us. And shortly after, these allegations came out. And it does raise a lot of questions for both me and the public if these two events were not connected.
Counselor, is Mr. Lujan still employed at the city, and if so, for how long?
He would be employed until September. In the settlement, it was agreed that he would only report directly to the mayor verbally. So we really don't have any oversight over this new created position, which was one of my major concerns. We have no oversight, and we have no idea about the progress that's being made. And, you know, the mayor's been MIA, so we've had no one to update us.
I will, just for purposes of disclosure, I did reach out to the mayor when the allegations first became public and invited him to be a guest on Around the Roundhouse. I have not heard from him yet, but I'm holding out hope, and the offer still stands if the mayor is listening to this podcast. Counselor, I want to switch our conversation to the governor's race, and I wanted to ask you about what impact you think semi-open primaries will have in the governor's race?
I think that semi-open primaries will face some difficulties in the governor's race just because they're so new, and a lot of independent voters have not been contacted. A lot of political races in general in New Mexico are decided in the primaries. So there's not a lot of muscle memory from political consultants, from machines, of actually reaching out to these independent voters. And independent voters typically are more difficult to reach in general because they're not as politically active as people who choose to register with a party. So I think that at least for this first cycle that it's implemented, there will be a large learning curve. And the more moderate candidates who hope to take advantage of these situations, they're going to have to weigh the cost-benefit analysis of target, you know, outreach to these voters as opposed to outreach to the existing moderate faction within their own party. So I think that it'll be interesting. As you know, because there's not a lot of general elections in New Mexico, we don't have a lot of general election data on the independent vote. So it'll be interesting to see how campaigns adapt to that. And as you know, I've worked on a lot of campaigns, so I know that firsthand. So I think this time around, you won't see, I think it'll be more of like the baseline of what parties and candidates are going to see. And once that data is collected from this first round, it'll get better with each election.
Counselor, give us your assessment on the candidates who have joined the race so far. Let's start out with the Dems. Who do you think's going to win it? So, you know, the candidates that are announced so far, we've got Deb Haaland, who's high-profile candidate, Sam Bregman, same thing, the mayor of Las Cruces. What are the odds?
Well, I think Deb Haaland has a significant advantage currently because she has a lot of money. She has a lot of the infrastructure and the large endorsements from the major players within the Democratic Party of New Mexico. But I think Bregman's poses a significant threat. I think that he has galvanized a lot of the grassroots and a lot of the traditional base of the Democratic Party. But New Mexico has grown and has diversified a lot, particularly in areas like Santa Fe that mean a lot to the Democratic Party primary process. So I think that he will see some challenges there of activating voters, particularly in those large democratic areas like Las Cruces and Santa Fe. But he does have some tools in the fact that he is from Albuquerque, and Albuquerque has a large population, and he's more comfortable in those circles than other candidates. But Deb Haaland is also, has a lot of experience because she was the congressional representative for Albuquerque. So I think that Santa Fe and a lot of these other areas may matter more because that place may be split up. I think Ken Miyagashima's contribution, maybe that he could act as maybe a spoiler in the race. I am personally a fan of his. I think he's a really good man. We've reached out, and I've had some conversations with him. He invited me to like this panel of elected officials when he was first, you know, thinking about running. But he just hasn't seemed to put the fundraising effort that would be needed to meet the challenges of being a significant player against Bregman or Haaland. So I think that he has a bit of a ways to go, but, you know, there's still a lot of time on the clock. So he could step it up, and you could see some differences there.
Although New Mexico didn't go red in the presidential election, we saw more voters voting for Trump this time around than when he first ran. Do you think that that works to Bregman's advantage, given that he's viewed as a more moderate Democrat than somebody like Deb Haaland, who is considered more of a, you know, progressive?
I think that the traditional Hispanic base in New Mexico is more fond of Bregman. But Bregman has to walk a fine line because Democratic primary voters tend to be more liberal, and he has to go on the attack against Trump, which may alienate some of the more moderates. So he has to figure out of that, walking that fine line. And he seems to be doing a decent job of it currently. But as the primary season heats up, I can easily see Haaland going out there and saying, you know, I'm the candidate that's really going to fight back against the Trump administration. And, you know, Bregman's going to have to try to balance the challenges of maintaining his moderate image and preparing for a general election, whereas Haaland has a lot of name ID and a lot of national, you know, national presence. So we'll see. I think that Bregman, you know, moderate candidates always have this problem as I've worked for several of them. But, you know, the best moderate candidates are ones that find a way to clear the primary and basically act as the moderate in the general. Being in the dominant party as a moderate candidate is always difficult.
So let's talk about the Republicans running for governor. Where are they?
Well, Greg Hull is the only announced candidate for governor, and I think that he's putting a lot of his focus on fundraising and seeing who else is going to dip their toe in. I've heard several names mentioned, former Lieutenant Governor John Sanchez and, you know, former Supreme Court Justice Judy Nakamura be talked about. But I haven't really seen any significant movement by anyone but Greg Hull at this point. If Greg Hull can keep other challengers out, he could kind of build the momentum. And his success as a mayor of Rio Rancho and his moderate tendencies, he could be, with enough money and enough focus, a serious threat in a general election because he could distance himself from Trump. And I think that that could help ease the tension that some of the people have with the Republican Party in New Mexico. And especially if the Democratic primary is as bloody as it looks like it's going to be, and Haaland does prevail, he could be a very sharp contrast to Haaland and maybe pick up a lot of the Bregman supporters. So I think a lot of the Republicans' parties' chances depend on how the Democratic Party's primary plays out.
At one point, I was hearing that former Governor Susana Martinez was considering running for governor again. Was there any truth to that, or did you hear anything along those lines?
I think a lot of people want her to, but I don't, I haven't really heard any indication from people close to her, her camp. It seems like a lot of the rumors are coming from national people who are looking to push her into running. I think there's a lot of concern that Greg Hull, being the mayor, even though he's the mayor of the third largest city, doesn't have the name ID to capitalize on such a race. But I think a lot of those concerns are a little overblown because Susana Martinez was just a district attorney in Las Cruces when she ran. Money can fix name ID problems. So if Greg Hull can raise the money, he could probably fix his name ID problem. And I think that the Republican Party is going to have to start to weigh the cost-benefit analysis of pouring into a candidate that's already in the race or to continue to try to make these efforts of getting someone more high-profile to jump in.
We spoke about President Trump earlier, and I wanted to ask you, where you would characterize yourself in today's Republican Party? Do you associate yourself with the MAGA movement?
I do not. I really follow in the steps of a lot of my mentors, like Senator McCain and Governor Hogan. I am definitely a moderate Republican. I think that, I think that the Republican Party in ways has just dedicated themselves to a single man, and it's having a lot of coercion on what it means to be a conservative. I think that, for instance, when I was, you know, first getting into politics, being a conservative meant, you know, limited government. It meant, you know, trying to make sure that we don't spend too much and also have free trade policies. And we're seeing a lot of the economics being eroded. I also, you know, thought being a conservative meant a strong foreign policy and, you know, really making sure that America is known on the national stage as a major player. And instead, you know, the Republican Party has become more of an isolationist, you know, has an isolationist foreign policy and is pulled back from the world stage. And, you know, I think that, you know, a lot of, interestingly, when you say moderate, it means something completely different today because if you look at Trump's stances, he's actually more moderate than George W. Bush was on those two key figures, trade and foreign policy. And I think that we, I need to really come to a consensus of what being a Republican means these days, especially since Trump is not going to be eligible for a second term, and there's really no clear successor to him.
What about J.D. Vance?
Well, I think J.D. Vance is an interesting guy, but if you look at Trump, he doesn't like having a second in command in general. And J.D. Vance, in my opinion, is kind of a chameleon. You know, he started off as like a never-Trumper neocon type of guy, and slowly, he transformed himself. Like, when he first released his book, Hillbilly Elegy, it was an anti-Trump book. It was a book to talk about why people were supportive of Trump and why there may have been misled. And that's, J.D. Vance jumped into politics himself. He completely reinvented himself when he ran for the Ohio United States Senate position. And, you know, it's hard to tell where he stands. And I think a lot of people in the party, especially in a post-Trump world, will be a little hesitant because of that.
Counselor, Republicans in Rio Arriba County are somewhat of a rarity. Were you, have you been a Republican since you were allowed to register to vote, since you were 18?
Yes, I've been a Republican since then, and it's actually, in these type of positions, not as uncommon as you may think. My councilmate, Justin Salasat Torres, is also a Republican. So District Four is represented by two Republicans. You know, Javier Sanchez, when he ran for mayor, was a Republican. And John Ritchie, who used to represent District One just a couple of years ago, he was a Republican himself. So in the, and, you know, I think one of Susana Martinez's appointees to the Northern New Mexico College Board of Regents, Chayo Garcia, she was a Republican on the city council for years as well. So they're usually, we've always been in the minority, but there have been Republicans on the city council before.
Okay. Counselor, I wanted to ask you about your political plans. Do you have aspirations for higher office?
You know, I never try to think too far ahead. I really am a guy that looks at trying to do the job that is on the table right now. And I'm just really focused on trying to be the best counselor for District Four I possibly could be and just trying to fight for the hometown that I love. I moved back here, and, you know, I sacrificed what could have been a different kind of political career in Arizona or Maryland and wanted to focus on coming back to my hometown because I love Espanola, and I want to see it, you know, improve. And I'm going to do whatever I can to try to improve it. And, you know, I always have thought about approaching politics and approaching these political positions as what will make, you know, my grandchildren's lives better. And, you know, my, the future, the future of children I may have better. And that's, that's where I'm approaching my politics from. So I never try to think too far ahead because you never know what God has planned for you. And I'm, I'm just trying to focus on doing the best job I can now. If something does come up down the line that I think I would be better suited to do, I will do that. But right now, I'm focused on what God put in front of me, and the voters have put me in there, and I'm going to just do what I can. And even, and I truly believe that. In my experience, the politicians that focus all the time on being reelected or jumping higher, many of them flame out, or they don't do much of anything. And I think if you just do the job that you were given, the best that you could do, that's all the voters could ask for.
Counselor, I also wanted to ask you a question, not related to politics, but related to love. If I'm not mistaken, you're getting ready to tie the knot at the cathedral here in Santa Fe in August. Tell us why you picked a Major League Baseball game to pop the question?
Well, I was planning a trip because I was invited to a conference in Washington, DC. And I was talking to the people there, and I said, you know, Kylie, my fiancee, has never been to Washington, DC before, and I thought it would be a really cool place, especially since I'm a nerdy political guy, to ask the question there. And they're like, well, let me tell you, Samuel, part of your conference is that we have this awesome suite that we're going to have for our conference. And it's the Rainy Center's Lamp Conference. And they were like, if you want, we can reach out for you to the Nationals baseball team and see... we can reach out for you to the Nationals baseball team and see if you could make the, the proposal there. And so behind the scenes for about a couple of months, I was working with them to plan this out and how it would work. And that's when I popped the question there.
Awesome. Well, I saw pictures of it and it, you know, kind of just gave me goosebumps because it was, it seemed like just such a special moment.
Yes, it was awesome.
I'm guessing Kylie was happy and, and surprised?
Yes, she was happy and surprised. And she kind of knew that I was gonna propose to her on that trip. She kind of like figured that out, but she didn't know when. And she was really surprised by, by the game itself and, and it was really cool. So. I, I can't thank the Rainy Center enough for that. And it was a great conference too. I learned a lot about municipal government there, so.
Awesome, awesome. Well, best of luck and I, I, I can't wait to see photos of you all at the cathedral. Beautiful place to have a wedding. So best of luck to you. And counselor, thank you so much for joining us today and being our guest on Around the Roundhouse. And my thanks as always to our viewers and listeners as well. Join us every week as we talk to newsmakers in the political realm by subscribing to our podcast through Spotify, Apple Podcasts, YouTube Music or wherever you get your podcasts. For the latest developments, follow our coverage online at SantaFeNewMexican.com where you can also subscribe to our political newsletter. Until next time, I'm Daniel Chacon and this has been Around the Roundhouse.